Good evening, welcome to the March 14th City Council Meeting. First order of business will be the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, the liberty and justice of our law.
Thank you. Onto the roll call of members.
Hi, Ms. K.
President.
Councilman Campbell, sorry. Councilman Coops.
Here.
Councilman Large.
Here.
Councilman Copeland.
Here.
Councilman Lamar is absent. Councilman Fleming.
President.
Thank you.
Want you to approve of the minutes?
Make a motion to approve the minutes?
We have a motion to approve the minutes. Do I have a second? We have a second, Councilman Fleming. On that, won't you? We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
As opposed? Councilman Large abstaining. Those minutes are approved. Thank you. Okay, on to old business. First item on the agenda is the 9/11 memorial monument. Wanted to have some discussion on this. This was brought up at our last council meeting and we thought we needed a more public forum on it. When we do have public comment, please, if you keep your, I mean, comments about five minutes or so and if you could not repeat what other people have stated, if you just want to state, well, your own opinion, or you can always say, "I agree with someone before me," that's always, that's always the probably, the easiest way to do it. So, I know Councilman Lamar is absent today, but he had a statement. Steve, if you wanted to read that for us?
Do you want me to do it first, Mayor, or do the public?
Just let, read what Councilman Lamar wanted to say, because he was kind of spearheading this project a little bit.
Okay. Citizens of Lebanon Mayor and City Council, I apologize that I'm not able to attend tonight's meeting. The 9/11 memorial is very special to everyone. I truly appreciate everyone's opinion on both the location and design. I would like to thank the Lebanon Fire Department and Chief Batts for everything they have done and continue to do. I would request to have a city poll on both the design and location of this memorial. I believe the community as a whole should decide the location and design of this memorial. I believe a description should be placed on a plaque close to the memorial to describe the event on this day that changed their generation, world, so that future generation would never forget what happened on this tragic day. I would like to propose to the City Council a committee to be formed of not more than 11 people of our community to decide the location, design, fundraising, and implementation of this project. Thank you for your consideration, Councilman Lamar.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you, sir.
All right, with that, we'll open the floor to public comment. I know this is, this issue's been kind of in the newspapers. It's fairly well been discussed, but if you wanted to come forward, form a line, and kind of say your piece before the council, we can move forward on this and have kind of our open discussion and hear your feedback, so. Yeah, come on up. And then also, please state your name, so your neighbors can put a face to your name.
Councilwoman O'Gentry, my name is Cindy Zimmerman. My comment is a personal opinion, not so much on location or the actual monument itself, but on the plaques that's been suggested from corporations. This I am really against, as I feel memorial is for the victims and the families of 9/11, as well as the general citizens of this country and not corporate America. I think a one-time thank you in the paper for donations from corporate America would even be more than enough. And on a side note, publicly, I'd like to thank Councilman Large for all the wonderful work he has done throughout the years.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Abby, coming up?
My name's Abby Sampson, and I would just like to say that I wholeheartedly support the monument being with the firefighters. I think that that's the appropriate place, because it'll get the proper care and the proper reverence as it's a part of them and a part of the fire service as a whole and first responders in general. I feel like the most appropriate place for it is to remain under their care where it'll have, like I said, the proper reverence and still be open to the public and a quieter place for meditation and that kind of reflection that it deserves.
Thank you very much, Abby. Any more public comment? So I guess we all like the idea of the committee being formed, sounds like? Yep.
When you get done, Mayor, I'll make a motion after everybody gets done. I got a motion to make, please.
Well, we'll do discussion with council. We'll also have input from chief, from the chiefs too, if they want to say something.
Hi, thank you for allowing us to speak on this. I am in favor of-
And state your name as well.
Joyce Douglas.
Thank you, Joyce.
Hi. I'm in favor of this memorial, this 9/11 memorial to be kept right where the original plans were for six years now, at our Lebanon Fire Station 11. They have a wonderful plan in place. They have the $52,000. That is the current 2016 amount of money needed. They have 10,000 of that 52,000. And this is not unique to any city in the nation. Some people brought that out at the last meeting. It's, there's over 1,500 9/11 memorials throughout the United States. And the majority of them take five to 10 years to fund. So our fire department is right on schedule for receiving funds and continuing to receive funds. They do annual runs, annual bike, I think a motorcycle race. And, and those funds go toward the memorial. So the rush is not there, they're right on schedule. The other thing is, it's 52,000 compared to the $100,000 one that Jeremy Lamar presented on behalf of SignWorks on the courthouse. And I attended the commissioners' meeting, and two of the commissioners are leaning heavily against allowing that on the courthouse lawn. And they stated so. And again, it should be privately funded. The majority in the nation are privately funded. And I just want to say one last thing. The simplicity is very important. It makes no less of an impact on what happened on 9/11/2001. It makes no impact on whether it's giant hands in the courthouse lawn or the simple construction, design and construction that our Station 11 has right now. So the important factor is to honor, to respect, and to never forget these, these heroes, whether they're living or dead. And that respect could be paid in a more personal situation at Fire Station 11. And for those that say, "Well, it's out of the area," I say, "If you care about 9/11 memorial, you'll go wherever it's placed." And Fire Station 11 is where I think it should be. Thank you.
Thank you, Joyce. Well said. Any other public comment? I expected a barn burner here, so.
Hi, my name's Linda Studavelle, and I do agree with Joyce on where this beam should be placed. I don't think it's up to one person to decide where to place it. And it was given to the fire department, who have done a great job taking care of it with great respect. They have been working diligently to get private donations, which is the way it should be. And they have a great plan to display it on their property where it should be. They are going to give their spare time and equipment to help defray the cost. And as Joyce said, 52,000 by a local contractor who lives here and pays taxes compared to 100,000 plus to an outside company is a no-brainer. We need to start using our local citizens who can do the same thing, same thing for half the cost. Let's let the fire department keep it and help them work on it and have a great monument for all of us to enjoy. And we can help them out and really enjoy it. They already have security, parking, and lighting in place 24/7. The school buses can bring their, bring their kids there. Excuse me. And senior citizens can get their vans out there. There's no steps, and it belongs at Station 11. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Any more public comment? Okay, with that, I'll kind of turn this over to the council, and if there are any councilmen that want to say their thoughts on it, we're more than happy to open it up, or if we're all happy with the kind of the concept of a committee, if we think that's the best way to go forward, we can kind of have that discussion as well.
I will just go ahead and state my piece on the fact as well. I think you're right that this thing takes a little bit of time to do. This is something we don't need to rush into. And I think if we really, you know, what if we look at 2021, 20-year anniversary? What if that's something we shoot for? We have $52,000 we have to raise, and I think by 2021, that's something we could raise with private funding. Especially with the assistance of the fire department too, out there, you know, "Hey, this is where we want it. You know, this is a good project for the community, and we make it a celebration on the 20th anniversary for our heroes." So that, that's where I'm leaning on this project at this point.
Any Councilman Fleming? Any other councilman?
In terms of the committee idea, I'm firmly of the opinion that the beam is the firefighter's beam. They brought it into the city. They ushered it in with a parade. They've, they've been the stewards of it for five-plus years. It's not our place to place a committee. If Chief Batts and Deputy Chiefs Wierie and Baird feel that they want to field a committee, then that's, that's kind of up to them.
Though I got to say, I, I'm reading what Jeremy asked me to read, and according to how I'm reading it, unless I'm wrong, I think he would like to propose a committee. I mean, I don't know if you guys agree or disagree, but the way I'm reading this without actually talking to him, you know, in depth, I think he would like to see a committee, but-
Right, yeah, I just wanted to, I just wanted to have to-
Yeah, I don't know.
If we, if, I mean, if, I mean, I feel comfortable letting the firefighters handle it, but if we feel that that's not enough oversight, then that's, that was what the discussion was for, so.
I don't know if he'd want me to-
I know, you can't, you can't speak for him, you can't speak for him.
No, you're right. He's in favor of the committee concept as-
That's how that letter read to me, but I, the first time I talked to him about it was today. I mean, I can make the motion, you guys can do what you want with the motion, I mean, that's your, that's your right to do.
Yeah, no, Jeremy, he wasn't wanting to do the whole thing himself, he just wanted to get it going.
Yeah, and that's why I think-
That's why he did.
I think that's why he wanted the committee, and I felt like if we do the committee, he should be on it since he kind of started that, you know, a few weeks ago.
I'll say, I don't, I don't think we're going to expect a motion or any action tonight.
Well, good, that's good.
But the commissioners, when they were at the meeting, they wanted, they wanted a public forum, they wanted to hear feedback from, from the community.
We don't have to worry about that tonight.
Yeah, so this is kind of that, that forum to hear the feedback.
Thanks.
I think Chuck and Jeremy ought to get together and-
Talk about it, yeah.
Start working on a committee and get a broad group of people, you know?
Chief, do you want to, do you want to speak on the, on this issue at all? I mean, you're kind of in the middle of this, and they want to put it at your station, so you gotta-
I just feel like Jeremy should be part of it, since he's trying to help get it, so that's all.
Well, ironically, we had a department meeting about this in November, excuse me, September of 2015. We met, recorded minutes, and we talked about it in-house. And we decided that we were going to table the idea until this spring because of the new mayor coming in and new council members. And Jeremy kind of jump-started this process, and it's been somewhat of a lightning rod. If you're asking my opinion, my opinion, I think it ought to go at Station 11. The design, we have no problem with people having input on the design. It's everyone's beam. It's not a fireman's beam, it's not a police officer's beam, it's not the military's beam. It's, it belongs to the United States, to me. Everyone that lost their lives has a piece in that beam. So we're honoring everyone, just not, just not emergency service and the military. As mentioned before, we have a lot of things already set up at Station 11 that can offset the costs. We're ADA accessible, we have security, we take care of the grounds ourselves. So a lot of those battles are, you know, have already been won. Definitely, we will support the council in whatever decision you make. I truly mean that, because at the end of the day, the beam deserves a better life than at the last bay of Station 11. One thing that I do ask when a committee is brought together is I feel like, when I say "I," I'm speaking on behalf of the department, so "we." We feel like that it's very important that people have the ability to touch the beam. It makes it real. I want a two-year-old to be able to walk up and touch the beam. I want an elderly person that's in a wheelchair to be able to walk up and touch the beam, because it belongs to everyone. I feel like that's one important thing that we shouldn't lose in this process. You look at the Vietnam War, the pictures of people, they want to touch it. So that's what I'm asking for, but the Lebanon Fire Department will support the council in any decision that's made.
Do you have, do you have any concerns? I mean, do you feel like you need a committee, or do you feel like you have a strong enough plan now that just with public support, I mean, the community's support, you're going to be able to accomplish it on your own and handle it? Or do you, do you, I mean, do you want a committee there, or, I mean, I'm just, I'm just looking for feedback from everybody?
We feel like less is more, to echo some of the comments that were made earlier. This is a very simple concept, with a 30-foot diameter pad, the beam on a pedestal around three and a half to four foot off the ground, two granite benches for a quiet time and reflection area. We've had estimated in both grade lighting and elevated lighting. And, you know, that is the design that we prefer, because less is more. The more money you spend on it doesn't make it any better. It doesn't add to it. We also think Station 11 is a good location because of the trail possibly coming through there and being a stop. I mean, we can, we can handle bus parking, it's a lot of different things. I like the idea of using local contractors. We have Aaron Ballard in attendance with A&amp;K Monuments. The initial bid for 52,000 was done through CF Jones. If we do decide to go that route, I personally will contact CF Jones, and, and I would like A&amp;K Monuments to be a part of that. You know, we can get several local businesses to be involved with this. We also have a local IFT firefighter that contacted me and has offered to bring in his excavating equipment and prep the, prep the site on its own. All of the Lebanon firefighters, Centertownship firefighters have offered to come in and work off-duty towards this project, so. I think it has the right momentum, and that's our plan.
I got a question. The only question I've got is the safety part of it, Chuck. If you've got people out there, and say you've got some kids out there and stuff, you guys would get an alarm, a run? Would that safety, would that be an issue with that being out there and people being out there at the same time? That's the only concern I've got, is the safety of the citizens.
I don't believe so.
You know what I mean, because you don't have much Perkin in front, the Perkins behind.
Right.
And I didn't know if it'd be a safety issue.
Most of the groups that visit us have adult supervision with the preschools, the Boy Scouts. Just about every time, we have, we have adult supervision with the groups that go.
You know what I mean by that?
Absolutely, absolutely, and, and we feel that we're a very secure location with the, with the security that we have in place.
That's the only concern I had, Mayor, was that, you know, I don't know.
Yeah, I had heard that as well, too, so. Any other questions or comments from the council?
It sounds like you can put your little committee together, it won't take very long to get it done.
Yes, that, that is the plan. I'm also a proponent of not using tax dollars. I think this ought to be privately funded through donations. I think that is a-
I agree with you, and I think you guys should have the final say as far as the fire department. I think your little group, you can have some men put, but I still think your guys' call at the end of the day. I mean, you know, it's what it's about.
Thank you. I also want to thank the public for their support of this. I have received numerous phone calls and emails supporting the 9/11 memorial. We've received many donations since this has all started again. I just want to thank the public for their support.
You guys are making, you guys work, or you're the fire-
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Chief Forworth, would you like to say anything at all? You can just say no, too, that's fine.
We're going to stay out of it.
Okay. All right, I understand your position, Chief. Yes, we have more public comment?
A question. Thank you. My name's Roberta Corey, I'm a resident. I have a question about this. On Facebook, our councilman has posted a "Pay, Fund Me" or some type of asking for donations. And I don't know if the council was aware of this. It's on Jeremy's, or, I'm not quite sure, but is this something where that money is eventually going to go to the fire department? What is his, what are his plans for this money? And did you approve this?
The GoFundMe campaign? I believe that, that, I believe he's kind of earmarked that to go to the, to the firefighters.
That's what he wants it to go to, is the fire department for the monument.
Okay, it doesn't say that, but-
It was all done through Jeremy, I mean, that was-
Right, this was something he's, okay.
Right.
Yeah, I, I think he-
He's trying to help get him money, that's what it's about.
So that doesn't, that's not part of the 100,000, that's part of the 52 that the fire department's raising.
I think it'll go to whatever, whatever is decided for the-
Okay, thank you.
Yes, it, I think he got very excited, and there wasn't any council permission from it, he just-
That's not city-based at all.
Yeah, that's, that's him acting as a private citizen.
It's all based off of what he was trying to do to get him money.
Yep. Any further discussion from the council? With that, I'm just going to kind of let the chief handle it. It sounds like it's in capable hands. And if you need a former committee, I think it's, I give you the, I mean, it's probably your prerogative to do so. And I don't think there's any other action we need from the council tonight, unless there's any other thoughts.
Okay. All right, with that, we will head on to new business. And first up is the website proposal. We discussed about it last, last meeting. So I have the formal proposal from, to you guys from DevLab, which is a local web development, web development firm. So the details of it, so it's a thousand dollars a month for up to 20 hours of service. And then service exceeding 20 hours monthly will be billed at a $50-an-hour rate. This, this kind of arose from, during the transition, I recognized that the planning department is currently handling the website, which I don't know if is a great usage of their limited time and talent. And I think we could be more efficiently done if this is something that a professional handles. So with that, I kind of lay that proposal before the council, and I wanted to take feedback, thoughts, and hopefully a motion on it.
I would, we pretty much, as a council, have pretty much agreed that if we get paperwork on the day of the meeting, we're not going to do something with it, because we haven't had time to read it and to discuss it at any time before this. I mean, I don't mind discussing it, but I'm just saying I'm not willing to make a motion or to vote on, on myself until next meeting. And secondly, did you put FRPs out for these?
These were, because they were a professional, I mean, it's professional service, and they were a, it's a smaller deal. I mean, it's not a, we're not building a road here. It's a, I mean, it's a local developer that has connections already with the, with the community.
And, and I know who he is, that's, that's not a problem. It's just, if we're going to do that, we need to do it, I mean, one way or the other.
Well, I'm just, I'm just, I mean, again, I was trying to-
And I thought we hired somebody a couple of years ago to do that.
Right, so-
The communications director.
I would agree. I mean, I, I did send you the main proposal, I mean, around noon today, so I mean, I, you guys knew it was coming. I mentioned the cost of it.
It was about 3:30 today.
Well, there were two, but, okay. I understand your, your point there, and if that's a hang-up, if we need to table it for next meeting, we can.
Because we can do it in two weeks if we're going to do it.
I mean, it is a thousand dollars a month, but, I mean, like I said, I mean, Derek, Derek is spending-
Where's that going to come from?
Well, that's part of the discussion as well, so. Again, if you're more comfortable tabling for next meeting, we can, we can do that. We have the rolls in front of you. Is there any discussion, other discussions?
Derek here. Hey, Derek. What do you think about the 20 hours? Is that going to be enough, or is that too much, or about enough?
That was 20 hours a month?
A month.
Yeah. That's, that's probably ballpark, pretty close, yeah. It's a, it, it, I completely understand the comments made so far, but it is falling further and further behind, just because of-
You've been doing it, haven't you?
I have, on a very, very limited-
I figured out it really wasn't your job, I didn't think.
No, it's not. I mean, I, you know, it's, the way it was designed when the city originally purchased the current website was, it was put together by eGov. And then, eGov, and then they handed it over to the city, and each department was responsible for their own updates.
Is that when we first did that a few years ago?
Yep, yep, and they, they preloaded a lot of information, even the calendar they preloaded. But it got down to the point where all that preloaded information was starting to fall off, and no new information was being put on. Each department doesn't have time to go into the back end of the website, operate it on a technical level, and, and make things look right on the front end. I know enough to be dangerous on a computer, and, and I struggle with it even.
Have you seen this, or, I mean, since you used to do it, or have been doing it, do you understand?
Yep, and I, I have enough, I've got enough experience in this world of technology that you're very unlikely to find a lower price than that. That's-
I'm not shocked about that or nothing, I just, is that enough to keep us up to date all the time? Not get behind like you say we are now, like the mayor says we are. Is that going to keep us up, so we don't have, if somebody goes online, they can find?
Yep.
What they want to find and not have to?
Yep, yep.
Okay.
There could be, there could be months where if you want to do kind of an overhaul of pictures and some other things, that you may go over that amount a little bit. But to maintain it and keep it current, that, that's right there, where it should be.
I'm not against it, as long as it's going to take care of us and the people can go in there and look at what they want to look at and not have to ask why can't they find this, or why they can't find that.
It still relies on, on departments to feed that information to that person, no matter who that person is. You know, I'm-
We should be able to, the mayor should be able to handle that if they don't give it to us.
Derek, got a question on that. If the departments are not doing that, why not?
I can't answer it for the other departments.
I mean-
That's not his answer, he can't answer.
Well, I understand that, but I'm just saying, that was how it was all put together, was for each department to take care of their own.
Yeah, and that's, it's-
And that's how the whole plan's supposed to work.
It's not coming up with the, the content, it's the, the technical end of logging on to the back end, getting it on there, making it look right, making sure the spacing is right. I mean, it's, you're talking about computer programmer skills that, that most people don't have.
The way it was sold to us, that it was supposed to be friendly enough that those folks could do all of that upfront without having to know all the knowledge of that.
I would say for a certain demographic, that would be the case, but at this point, the majority of users don't have necessarily a whole lot of computer experience that would allow them to operate the back end of a website.
I just know that was the way it was sold to us.
I wasn't involved with the sales pitch, that's all I can say.
I understand that, but I'm just saying, that's why it was that way.
Sure. I would, I would have argued that if I would have been in the room.
So it's a thousand dollars a month for 20 hours a month, is that right, Mayor?
That is correct, and then if we go over that, then there's the-
I understand. We could watch that, though, I guess, if it got, you know-
Yes, yeah.
We could see what was going on if it got out of mind, couldn't we?
Well, and also, I would, like I said, I, when I first came in, like, if you noticed, the date on it, the proposal is from January. I mean, I-
I didn't even download that, that's my fault.
I got it from, you know, the planning department is currently a short staff, right? Derek is, Derek is, is in the interim position, and his, the previous position was not filled yet, so that's, I mean, they are a man short.
I think he's done a good job for being shorthanded.
Yes, he has, and it's, again, this is one of those things I wanted to try to take off his plate.
I agree with you. He shouldn't be doing that anyway, that's not really his affection too.
Again, Councilman Campbell, I apologize, it was not till 3 o'clock today, but I had brought it up before, and I, I thought it was a fairly simple proposal. So I, that's why I didn't think it would be an issue if it wasn't today, but-
I understand that.
And I just would hate for another two more weeks to go by where he has more displayed, and he's getting busier every day, so.
It's kind of, I mean, it's just like, it's not so much the size of it, I mean, I haven't read it completely, but at the same time, other things come up that have a lot more depth to it that comes in on that day, and you want something done, or we want something. We, that's why we've kind of adopted that.
I understand your concern, and I, in the future, I will, I mean, we've been talking about this for a month now, so I, there's been plenty of notice of what I was thinking with it, and I believe I mentioned the price last time as well. And that's exactly what you have here, so. I understand your concern, I understand, and I will work to do that, get you sooner, but.
So, I understand your concern, I understand, and I will work to do that, get you sooner, but...
So we have reps here, correct? I mean, Chad's here, correct?
Yes, he is.
Can, can we ask a couple of questions?
Sure. That's not a problem, Chad.
Putting you on the spot, Chad, sorry. So just to confirm a couple of things, so, I'm, from looking through this, I mean, there's no official hard contract, right? Like, we're not signing like a three-year deal or anything? This is essentially a month-to-month? That's, that's kind of what we're looking at, correct?
Right, right.
And then it's, the, the fundamental idea currently is a, a basic maintenance piece. So using the current integration that we have, but filtering the data through you as opposed to filtering through Derek and going that route, correct?
Right. Starting out, I'm just taking over what Derek has been doing, or had been doing. And then if we want to expand on that some, somewhere down the road, then, you know, we'll, we'll talk about that then. But as, as it is now, I'm just, I'm doing, I would be doing what Derek has been doing.
Okay. And then, so anything down the road, obviously, is going to be a different conversation, but, I mean, at that point, we're looking at potentially, I mean, you, you kind of do all of the above, right? I mean, you guys even develop apps. So from a, from a website standpoint, we can look at a total redevelopment. We can look at a domain change. We can look at a number of different options. But that's kind of different than the scope of what we're looking at today. Today, we don't have info for meetings that are next week, type of deal.
Right.
Cool.
Rob, have you looked at this? Have you seen this?
No, I haven't.
And I, I would just, if any action would be taken tonight, I would just suggest that it would be, it could be moved on, but subject to, you know, legal reviewing, comment, and approve from that standpoint.
The way I look at it, and I think you're exactly right, I agree with you, Rob. But you've got this new contract, it sounds like to me just a month-to-month basis, is that correct?
That's correct.
Yeah. I mean, my, my only thing at this point is, I mean, I was attempted to be contacted this weekend by somebody, and there's no information on the site about me, which, I mean, that's, that's not a huge deal. I know, I'm saying it out loud, but, uh, but, you know, there's, there's content on there that, that we owe it to the folks that are in the room and not in the room, that, that we really need to get on there. And, you know, from, from my standpoint, especially for something that we're not locking ourselves into a contract, it's a, it's a short-term solution that, um, I, I think gets us to where we need to be. Obviously, it's, it's working with a local vendor, which I'm always a huge fan of.
I am too.
So...
And Councilman Coontz is right. People don't even know who their elected officials are right now. We gotta get it fixed. So I think, you know, if we take action tonight, we could review it and get this website up and running where it should be.
Make the motion.
Yep.
Where are we looking at coming from with the funding on a project like this?
I think that's council's prerogative.
Have we got money in, in the IT department? Any money that we can use from that, or did you know?
Well, the, the major IT contractor is with Sando from utilities, correct? So that's not really...
I didn't know that.
I think.
Yeah, so that's, we've, because utilities outsourced the IT to Sando, so it's not really in our budget, really. It's the...
We put money into that budget though, from the city side of it, in the IT budget.
I think they're using all of it.
I think we put forty-three percent of it, and there's ours.
Well, and this is, well, this would be an additional, right? So this would be, I mean, something new we have.
We could, we could fund it for, say, a year and try it out and see what we, you know, see what happens. On a month-to-month basis, all it is anyway. Twelve thousand dollars for a year if nothing changes, is that correct?
That's if we don't exceed the twenty hours.
No, I understand, I mean, at least we get something to work, we want some kind of foundation.
I mean, I want, I mean, it's, you're, you're the, you're the fiscal body, so we're, I mean, this is a proposal I have. I mean, this is operations of the city government that I think we need to address, it's something identified. But you're the council, you're the ones that have to make the decision of how to pay for, where the money comes from.
How about rainy day fund, are we okay on that? Tony here at the court? For a year?
I don't think it's a rainy day fund opportunity, but...
I just, just a question, I don't...
Yes, there's money in the rainy day fund.
I mean, I didn't know we, you know, but...
Is this, is this something we could use food and beverage for, for a month? And then that gives us two more meetings to come up with a permanent solution.
I don't know. Are you asking the council, or me?
I was kind of looking at John.
I'll make a most, we, you, twelve thousand dollars we're taking out of court.
Out of what?
What's that?
Oh, rainy day fund, rainy day fund.
I will just say those are normally like a one-time expense, that what the council has tried to keep it to.
I mean, that's fine, but can I, like I say, twelve thousand dollars? I can say twelve thousand dollars, if it gets over that, then we're gonna have to address it some other way, or not? I, I, or, we, you guys got it better, they say it.
Since we're not clear on how we're gonna fund it, we're not clear, I mean, I got, I have eleven thirty this afternoon, so...
I'm okay with tabling this.
We should, we should, we should table this, even though it's a very simple deal, we should table it, come back, we know we're gonna fund it. Rob's had time to look at it first and do whatever he needs to do with it, just to make sure. Because sometimes something so simple can turn into something that's not simple.
That's fine, that's fine.
So, so we're sure.
I'll change my most, I'll make a most, we table it to the twenty-eighth and give Rob a chance to look at it and we figure out where we're gonna fund it from.
And I'll second it.
The motion is seconded, is there any discussion? Public included? Okay. We have a motion seconded, table, you have, Councilman?
Yeah, I mean, we're gonna discuss where the money's coming from, but I'm assuming this is something we can put in the budget next year as well, going forward. Correct? So we can draw that in.
Budget time, it's a budget here.
Be a budget item.
New council member, I want to know everything, right?
It's a budget item is where it needs to go.
Well, and, and I, and I agree, I just, you know, I'm, I'm worried about Derek holding on, that's one thing, that's why I brought it up.
That's something that had to come up before, that's really a budget item, and Keith's right, so it's a matter of something you need to do.
Yeah, but we have an issue now, not in July and August, to be approved for January.
We need to make sure we figure that out when the time comes for budgets.
I would agree, I'd agree. All right, so we have motion seconded to table to the next meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, motion is, proposal is tabled. Onto the other proposal I had now, so we can see how this might go. So this is the physical proposal, and you had the rates before. Um, this is, again, the, uh, the official proposal from OpenGov. This is the online financial portal we've talked about. There weren't any other competitors in this space. Um, I, I kind of did some research on it, and this is kind of a cutting-edge thing. So there aren't really any other competitors that, that perform these kind of services. Like, so the price you have here before you, the seventy-six hundred dollars, that is the, that is a per year. The two thousand seven hundred dollars is the initiation fee, and then, or initialization fee, and then the, so the total price you have here, the twenty-five five hundred, that is for a three-year. So that is not paid at this time. That would be a, an annual expenditure once a year. And it would be the, seventy-six hundred dollars would be the annual, annual price on that. So, um, again, this is another proposal, this is something I, I wanted to bring, the financial portal. Some, allow us to get our books on the internet, allow citizens and, and all of you as well to see, you know. We now know what we have in our rainy day fund. We now know what we have in our, those funds like that, these, answered some of these questions we have. So, um, with that...
That's kind of the same issue we, we got again, really. I mean, I hate to say that, but it is, it's...
I agree.
So, we'll decide what we're gonna do.
It's fine, we can, we can table it again.
I just think we need to come up with where the funding's gonna come from.
Yeah, I'm not against it, I think we need to...
Give us the opportunity to review it and make sure we're in good standing.
Rob, have you moved the contract?
I have not, but I, I think, um, at least again, if any action would be taken, I mean, if you would approve it, subject to review and comment, I mean, I'm...
I just think it's a funding mechanism we just need to look at. And I would make a proposal that we... Give us the opportunity, I'm sorry, to take a look at funding, proper funding, so we can...
We all need to look at it, we need to find we're gonna pay it out, or what fund.
So that would be my motion.
Well, you're the fiscal arm, I just want to make sure we, again, we've been talking about these for...
At least now you've got on the books, we need to do something about it in two weeks. And I'll second your motion, John.
I think we had the first proposal for this back in February, so, I mean, this, we're, we're gonna be a full two months from the process. So I'm just trying to get this going here. Yeah, but we, I mean, I told you how much it's gonna be, and so, but it's okay, it's all right. Um, we can, so I have a motion to table, do we have a second?
Yes, sir.
Motion is seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Oh, did we have discussion, I apologize. Councilman Fleming?
So, I mean, if we're looking at this one as well, what other places could we pull funding for to get this through budget time? Just from the older council members.
The only two you have is your rainy day fund or your food and beverage, basically, that's it. Not as long as we've done things like that, but generally, those two funds are used for large equipment, one-time things. And when we say one-time, it's like, it might be once in every ten years.
Might be a new dump truck, might be something like that.
Something like that, but it's not, you're not gonna do that every year, is what I'm saying.
Something like this is a yearly basis, you need to actually have a line item, a budget time to fund that, really.
The rainy day fund. Do you know the food and beverage offhand? Okay, I'm just curious, so...
Food and beverage usually you don't do, you don't do stuff like that.
These, these were just proposals I had that I wanted to, after coming in, the new eyes, I mean, I wanted to, these are, these are, these are, these are issues I'm seeing as executive, and I'm looking for your assistance to help correct some of that, and...
Not against it, we just need to find a little bit of funding.
Previous budget is, has issues...
If you could help. What does this, as far as information goes, how's that different than what you can get off of Gateway? I've asked that earlier. Because I know some people are getting a lot of information out of Gateway and seem to be doing okay with it.
The Gateway is more on an annual basis. And this, again, it provides a ability to have it updated monthly. It provides more of a real-time tracking of the financials. Um, it allows you to run various reports that are not available or will be very difficult to run in Gateway. It allows some visualizations of the funding, you can track it over years, far simpler. There's an online checkbook function, you can see how we're, you know, we would have a thousand dollars to DevLab or whoever else. I mean, you, you can track the city expenditures from a, from a council or from a citizen perspective.
How does that tie into the Indiana code about open government, the open door law? How does that, how does that equate to that?
In, in what way?
Well, the open door, you have, I mean, there's a way people can get the same information.
I would, yeah, I would agree, I mean...
And what I'm saying is, but if you do it what you're saying, it's just wide open to anybody forever.
Yeah, and, and while it would, it saves some time on staff, freedom of information requests, so saves staff time there because the, the data and information is already available publicly.
With the Indiana code?
No, there are other, there are other cities in Indiana that use this soft, use this program.
They have to fill out a form to do it.
Huh?
I mean, they have to fill out a form to get it, that's all I'm saying. I'm not opposed to that for that reason.
I, I don't think the, open door law doesn't prevent you from being more open. It prevents you from not having things available. So if you wanted to have more transparency, that doesn't, I don't, I wouldn't believe it would stop you from that, but...
You wouldn't think, I wouldn't bet that.
Again, though, the, there are other cities and communities in Indiana that use this program that, so I'm sure it's in pointance.
Let me add one item. When, I can't remember who it was that asked the question about the, the total amount that's in the budget. I guess, let me go back and say that we requested in our budget five hundred thousand for food and beverage and five hundred thousand for rainy day each year in our budget. So that money is there. I mean, that's not the total, but that's what we normally can spend each year out of each of those. They normally try and spend between two and three hundred thousand, and that money is then just refunded back to the general fund. So that money, there is five hundred thousand dollars in each of those funds that we start out each year with.
We do it every year, we have the last two years, if I'm not mistaken, and it's been the same.
And I would also point out too, there are, there are thirty thousand dollars in legal fees for the city, for the council that you're currently using the city attorney. And if that's a thirty thousand, thirty thousand dollars is sitting there too, so, unless you plan on exercising those. Just wanted to bring that up.
That's a good point as well.
You can reappropriate that, can't you?
A reapropriation would be an additional to DLGF, so it would increase our budget. I can't reappropriate legal fees to wherever this is coming from.
Could you consult online the council?
I mean, I don't know how you would pay for this out of the council legal fees. I mean, if, you can reappropriate it, but that's an additional to DLGF, so it would increase our budget by that amount of money.
There's enough places we can take out till we get to budget time anyway, I think, you know. Neither one's a large amount of money, we couldn't do something until budget time. We just need to figure where it's gonna come from before we have a budget again, I think.
Speaking of things, this is right, this is about twenty-seven thousand dollars for the rest of the year, so, okay. With that, we have a...
If you can build a one-time deal that can figure out budget time how you want to fund it, I think I can...
So we have a proposed, we have a motion seconded to table it, is there any other discussion?
Lost what I was thinking, John. So I, just curious on that part too. We can't reappropriate funds over, off those legal fees we went into, or how does that work?
You can't reappropriate from a payroll line to a supplies line without the permission of the Department of Local Government and Finance. So they have to approve it, which then is added to our annual budget.
Okay.
I'm not sure why that even is in this conversation now.
Well, if, if you don't use funds...
This is a good idea, we're gonna, we're gonna fund it.
Well, you were, you were just talking about where...
Figure out where the money comes from.
So just open discussion, so...
Okay, we have a motion seconded, any further discussion? Okay, with that, um, all in fable, all in favor of the motion to table the proposal for the next meeting?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Okay, motion is, proposal's been tabled. Okay. Onto Dick Robertson with the Stormwater Board, you have another, I got it warmed up for you, Dick. Presentation from the Stormwater Board concerning upcoming projects and kind of a near-future possible council action.
Thank you Chad and Derek, by the way. That was a, I don't think we ever got to that part, but thank you.
Good evening, council. I'm glad you're warmed up, and, right, I'm kind of afraid, kind of afraid to talk now. I gave you, gave you a packet, so I hope you looked through it real quick. Just wanted to come to the council and visit with you guys, give you an update on the Stormwater Board. The Stormwater Board now, uh, we're operating out of the Lebanon Street Department now. Your comrade, Mr. Large there, has agreed to work with us for, for a year, if I can keep him here that long, to be our operations manager and help get us going. We are currently, I'm sure you've probably seen it in the paper, we are currently advertising now for a operations manager that we hope to get on board probably by the first of May. So that way we can get him with Steve, to work with Steve for about three or four months, to get some information out of him if we can. Uh, also, I want to thank Larry Lee and his staff. Uh, Larry, uh, we work, Larry's staff and his department, his fellows help us do some of the necessary repairs and maintenance work that we do, or have done in the past, and they're working with us now to do that. I want to thank them for that and all their work. It's been a great working relationship so far, and I hope to continue that as well. Some of the things I want to talk about is some of the projects that we've completed in the past here. As you know, North... As you know, North Meridian Street is finally done, from Washington Street to Park Street, that was a water and a stormwater project, that's completed now. South Meridian Street, just south of Noble Street, that project was a storm improvement project, that is completed. We're currently working on Lafayette Avenue from the bridge north to Hoye Avenue. We just have a little bit of storm to finish up there by the railroad by dock. Water goes from Hoye on up to Riley Road, they're currently bringing that water down from Riley down to the railroad by dock. They're currently working with the railroad, they got a problem with their water line, they're going to have to bore underneath the railroad and so they got a real problem there. So, we're just kind of delaying on that end a little bit, but we're also taking that project up Grant, up Chicago Street. That project has an OCA grant that we're using to fund that product, end of the project. Which, this project will probably end probably about the first of August. If you look at the second sheet I gave you, or handed out to you, it has a list of. If you put this back on the screen there for people.
I think the projector's dead.
Anyway, on this list is. Grant Street, is a project we have currently from Fordice Street down to, actually the storm park section of it goes to Williams. There's sanitary ditch work that comes from the bridge down to Williams and it goes then over to Ann Street. We're taking the storm down to Williams and up Williams over to the bridge, get it into Prairie Creek. That project will start probably, will probably bid at this fall, it'll probably start first of next year, 2017. Northeast Street's another project that's going, which will mirror Meridian Street project. That one also will be bidding at the end of this year and it will also start this fall. We're do, I, we tried very hard to separate the start of those two projects, but with the bonding that we have. When we got the bonding, bonding has changed now, used to we could get the bond and start the project whenever we got ready to start it. Now, once you get a bond, you've got three years to, once you get your money, you've got three years to start. So, our three years is coming up here at the end of the year, so we have to get something started by then, so. That's why unfortunately we're having to get Grant Street and Washington Street started, or East Street, I mean, started at the same time. East Street will be phased, just like Meridian Street was, we'll be doing the north phase, which will be from Fordice Street all the way to Yulon Drive. That will start here in the spring, go right up to almost Fourth of July. Then right after Fourth of July, we'll start Phase Two from Fordice Street to Washington Street. I will tell you, we've, I believe we ended up with a very nice project on Meridian Street. Did we have a lot of headaches? Yes, I used, I used to have a lot more dark hair than I used to have now. A lot of that is from Meridian Street, Cory calling me and hassling me every now and then. But, anyway, that project really has turned out very well. Is there, is it a hundred percent perfect? No, no job's ever a hundred percent perfect. But I'm telling you, it's, it's about ninety-nine percent perfect. I'm very proud of that project and I wish there were some things we could have done differently. Hindsight, we wish we'd have completed all new sidewalks all the way up and down the street.
I agree with that.
Agreed.
And I'm going to talk to you about some, another project to try to look at doing some things like that. Also, Yulon Drive is another project, starts at North Outer Drive, goes down to Almswamp Road. Is another project we want to try to get working on. I left out Fordice Street, where'd Derek go? I don't, I didn't want him to think I took it off the project, but Fordice Street from, actually goes around the curb where Derek lives, down to Grant Street. We're looking to try to bring a lot of that water down to Grant. We've actually upsized the pipe on Grant Street so we can pick up that water at a later date. So, that's going to be a project that's going to be coming on, we just haven't got a date for it. Lysville Road from Almswamp Road to John Bart Road is another project, I know we're going to have to wait till we get the rest of that someday annexed into the city. But we got a project there that needs to be done. Also, we're looking at, if the city could ever go out and annex John Bart Road all the way through. John Bart Road from Almswamp, or yeah, from Lysville to Washington Street is one that really needs taking care of. And that's going to be a major, major, major project there, but that's something we've got to look at there. Main Street is another one from Park Street to Grant Street. There was a nice young lady in there just a little bit ago at the first meeting, told me also about a project off of Grant Street in that same area southeast. Or East-South Street from Grant to Indianapolis Road. Well, I put that on the list for her and fortunately she left, so I hope she's at home watching that, so it is on the list, so. Don't know much about that project yet, just heard about it this evening, the problems they got there, so that's something we'll investigate, see what's going on there. Talked about Chicago, Busby Street, Henry Street, Franklin Street are all extension projects off of Garfield and Chicago. Garfield Street is another project we're doing, carrying on right off of the Lafayette Avenue project. That's actually goes all the way up Garfield from Chicago to Essex. And then we're taking some of those side streets and headed east to go up, pick up some of that water up on the east side. That we've always had a little bit of problems with, plus especially where places we don't have any drains whatsoever, so. Those are some of the future projects we have, you can see some of the, and these are estimates of, of costs. We're looking probably about sixteen and a half million over several years, so. I don't want you to sweat, I'm not here to beg for that kind of money right now, especially after the last little bit, so I'll be, I'll be nice. You know, I won't ask for a little, little bit, okay? That's some of the future projects, I touched about Grant Street. Also, let you know that we've done a regional detention planning study, that was actually done three years ago. We are still working on that, that is on the I-64 corridor master drainage plan.
Sixty-five.
Sixty-five, what did I say?
I-64.
Oh, sixty-five, I'm sorry. Sixty-five, a master drainage plan, that's the one on the south end of town. Route 39 goes around the industrial park, where we're looking at some retention areas to put around the, the industrial park area. To try to hold some of the water there a little bit. Also, want to let you know that we are doing a update of our drainage fee, stormwater fee. That was started eight years ago at three dollars. We set it up that it would raise twenty-five cents a year and when it got to five dollars at that point, we would reevaluate the fee, see if the fee was enough. So, right now, we're in the process right now of reevaluating that fee. If we come back and think the fee needs to be raised or something, we'll be back to talk to you about that. Hopefully, we want to try to do that early this summer, midsummer sometime and get, get our study over with and done. So that way we can try to get back to you and let you know what that, what that may be. I will guarantee if there's any kind of an increase, you'll never see anything anymore than twenty-five cents at a time. I will not do that to the city, I, I don't believe in doing that to the city. We, we set that for a specific reason, so that way there wouldn't be much difficulty for people to, to have. Instead of coming in and asking for a three or four dollar increase, we won't do that, so. I do not know what it is, we haven't even met yet, we're actually having a, a meeting at the end of the month there.
It could be the twentieth of next month, we're talking about having a great study.
Sit down and really sit down, talk about numbers and so forth, so. The thing I did want to talk to you a little bit about was the Northeast Street project. Something that we have found. In the past, the Stormwater Board has, has really tried, and most of these projects are stormwater and water combined projects. And the Stormwater has really kind of taken it on their own to do a lot of this work and fund a lot of this work with a bond. But there seems to be more and more work that always needs to be done. And one of the things that we want to do on East Street that we did not do, and I'm sorry that we didn't, I sure wish we had it, but. One of the things we want to do on East Street is, is basically make up for the things we didn't do on Meridian. And that is complete, a complete sidewalk program all the way through, as well as replacing the streetlights. And if you look back, I took that page. I'm talking sidewalks, but I'm going to jump to streetlights here real quick. Oh, we don't have the overhead. Have we got the overhead? Let's hope that we could show that.
I'll mention to the council, we're talking about upgrading the equipment again in here, just wanted to mention that again.
I'm sorry. It's always been a, excuse me, but when I was on the council before, it was always kind of a dream that the. I'm sorry Cory, Cory's going to get after me for this, I know, but it's always been kind of a dream that, that, that we could take Meridian Street and East Street. And make it something that Lebanon can really be proud of because of Fourth of July. Lebanon, Fourth of July is, is, you know, the big thing for Lebanon. And it's always been a dream to try to, to update streetlights in the community, coming in, going out. And one of the ideas was try to do something with Meridian Street and East Street. Well, hindsight, on Meridian Street, we were able to put, put in some buried conduit from, actually from Washington Street all the way down to the bridge on the east side. People I talked to, the utilities and everybody said, let's do it, let's do it now, we'll worry about whether we can get it done, but at least we got the buried conduit in there. And I gave you a handout picture of, of a typical streetlight that we're looking at.
Put it on there and we'll see it on the screens.
I don't know if it's, can you see it there?
Yeah.
Okay, well, it's not on the overhead. Need to update, update the equipment, I guess, anyway. This, these streetlights here, I think, are actually come out of Carmel, the ones that they showed, that they gave us for demonstration. But I'm telling you, some of the ideas we're looking at is putting, is putting streetlights like this with, with the hangers for the flowers and also with American flags. And I'm thinking, how cool could Meridian and East Street be if we could put new streetlights all the way down through there and with American flags on Fourth of July? And frankly, I don't know anybody that would not like to see that in, in what we have. And the issue is a lot of money. I've, we've, I've been working with utilities because I think this needs to be a group effort between the utilities and the city as well, oh, there you go. I think this needs to be a group effort from the city and the utilities to try their onboard. We've been working with them about different lights and fixtures and everything else. And everybody there's onboard, the, we're all onboard, but it's that number that we're all looking at, trying to figure out who's going to take care of that number. Or how are we going to take care of that number? But some of the things that we have found from the stormwater side is that we can't, we can't do this from our side all the time. We need help from the city somewhere to do this. Either, either to replace all the sidewalks, we have some sidewalk replacements scheduled in the project that we're going to be taking out. We're going to be fixing every handicap intersection, everything. But there are some sidewalks that are going to be damaged that we're going to have to repair, anything that's damaged, we have to fix. But we're looking, let's fix the whole thing all the way through, so it looks good all the way through, from back of curb to back of curb, all the way through. Love Meridian Street, but man, I wish we'd have done the sidewalks.
It's not too late, I'm just letting you know.
It is from our side, I'm sorry.
I can find another punch list, I can.
But, it's, we're trying to look and try to get a complete project. I travel, in my job, I travel different communities and so forth and I see streetlights up and down the streets, I see new, new storm surer projects. And when I see somebody that's done everything from back of curb to back of curb, I go, I get sick because I think, why didn't we do that? Why didn't we think about that? And the issue is, is funding, basically. We didn't fund enough in the project to do it and that's how we need to look at other, other ways we could do it. I want you to think about that, I gave you a num, I gave you a page that's got some numbers on it. This one page here from CHA, this, CHA's done the engineering on our project. I've asked them to give us some engineering costs, a construction cost for these projects to do. And also I gave you, also there's a price in here from Anixter, who is, this is a supply company with utilities. That supplies all their fixtures, all their poles and so forth. This number here that they got on this page is actually for North Meridian Street, if you're near North Meridian. Now, I want you all to know, this is the highest priced item. There are cheaper items. The key thing that we've been talking about the utilities is to make sure you get what you want, that, that's, works for you guys. And you guys could manage and maintain the cheapest way possible, or the best way possible. They're all LED lights, which is just exactly what I understand now is all set up around the city hall here. And our goal is to try to fix it so Lebanon is a real distinctive place to come to. And I think it's something that, I know it's an investment, I know it's a lot of money to invest. And one thing about East Street is, we don't need a lot of money upfront. I mean, all I have is Phase One to start, I need money for Phase One. We need, then we, this year or next year, 2017, we need money for Phase Two if you decide you want to do it. So, we could do it all in phases, that's no problem. So, I want you to have it, I want you to think about it, I want you, if you have any questions, I want you to give me a call and ask me, I'll, I'll sit down with each and every one of you to talk about it more. Another project there, I want, I wanted to, to mention to you, I've talked, I spoke with the mayor about it. We're still in limbo whether it's, what, something that we want to do or not, but I wanted to bring it to you guys anyway, and this is. The idea of putting a sidewalk there where this project was actually in the intersection project coming out of the park. There at the Wolf property, I don't know whether we want to do that or not, but it's the idea of taking a portion of his corner, his side of his yard. And putting a sidewalk with a block wall and so forth. I don't know if we want to do that, but the only reason we got it in here is that when the city last year was looking at the intersection at the park. I said, let us do that because we're changing the drain there at the corner. I said, we could just tie it into our project. I don't know if that's something we want to do, it's nothing we have to do right now.
Are they still looking at reengineering that entrance to the park?
That I don't know, that I don't know, I don't know what the plans are in that.
Tom was working on that last year, correct?
Yeah. Yeah, I don't know what's happened to that. But we've tried to incorporate this into our, into our project, just, just because we were going to be there. And I, I told Tom last year that, hey, let us, let us look at it, so it's there, we don't have to do it right now, nobody has to do it right now.
Last year, we did fund it for Tom Coons, he's supposed to, you know, look at that, hit your way into the park and see what was, what he was going to do, but we've never heard nothing back. They have us funded to do the design last year.
Do the full.
I do remember that, yeah. I don't know where it's at though, but I do remember that.
All that's talking about it.
But you, these numbers here on this page are not in our agreement with CHA. So, if we move forward with sidewalks completely, or if we move forward with sidewalks and lights, we're all set to do that, we got all the plans to do it. All we have to do is throw them in our plans, because what we want to do is have one contractor do it all. Now, the utilities will probably manage all the light system, they'll probably do that, because they'll probably want to do that themselves, other than burying the cable and the conduit. And stuff like that will probably be done by the contract. But they'll probably do all the installation, I'm sure. Like I say, I haven't, we haven't finished talking with utilities and see what they want to do. They're very much interested, they'll, they, I think their position is, whatever the city wants to. They'll, they, I think their position is, whatever the city wants to, we'll, we'll do, we'll, we'll jump in. So I think this is a, I think this is really, can be something neat for the community of Lebanon.
So is East Street, from a lighting standpoint, similar to what you have here for Meridian Street?
The number you got on CHA page, that is, that is the number for, in the blue ink, that's the number for East Street, Phase One and Phase Two. That's just, that's just for the lighting itself. You see the breakdown on the engineering cost, that's the lighting cost itself.
Just East Street.
Yeah.
Correct, and then Meridian's on the separate page.
So I want you to have those numbers, and like I say, take a look. Any questions, please give me a call, I'd be happy to sit down with any of you, and if you've got any questions, or anyone else has, I'll be happy to answer any questions, but, you know, I, we're trying to make something really look good out of these two projects. I, I, I know we have other parts of the community that we need to work in, and we need to do things like that.
That's what I was going to ask you.
I personally would love to see you start from 39, go all the way through. I go through communities almost every day, I was, matter of fact, through Brazil today, and they got, they got new lighting down through Brazil. New street, new sidewalks downtown, from building to building, and I go, oh, why didn't we do that? You know, so.
Dick, can you remind everybody on TV and here in the room, when you guys meet for the Stormwater Board?
We meet the first Monday of every month at 4:30 in the room next door. They're always open to the public. Something else we do, and I don't know that you guys know, we do that. Every one of these major projects we have, we have a meeting with property owners. And we try to have at least two, maybe three meetings with property owners only. Now, we don't leave the public out, but we invite the property owners there, because we want them aware of what we are doing on the project, and if they got any question, we want to be able to answer their question. And we'll have them in at the very beginning, we'll have them in at the meeting sometime middle, and then sometimes we'll, we'll have them in right before it starts, so that way, you know, they can know who the contractor's going to be, they can know who's going to be in charge right there, that if they got a question, they can go out and they can talk to. I think Aaron can vouch for, because he's been at all those meetings that we've had for the property owners, that I try to make sure they know what we're doing and what's coming up, so.
If the meeting falls on a holiday, Cory, it's the next Monday?
Yeah, it's usually the next Monday.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Thank you, Dick, appreciate that, appreciate the update.
And I'd like to, like I say, I'll, we'll try to make an effort, come back every year, give you guys an update. We haven't done this before, and I think it's a great idea, so thanks for the time.
Any other questions for Dick? We good there? Okay. Couple more, quick more things here. Because of our departure of Councilman Large, that opens a vacancy, a council appointment from the council to the Planning Commission. So the way the, Derek, I believe this, you said the statute reads right, is it's either a council member or a municipal employee needs to fill that appointment. So if anyone from the council is interested in filling that position...
We'll take applications.
From the council?
Absolutely.
You meet the third Monday of every month at 7:00. I served there for seven years, thank you.
Looking at that end.
We may want to see if any of our...
You guys can talk about it, I guess.
Any of our employees want to check it out.
I got a, I got a person, you guys need to think about it, and I, contact, I got a person that is not on the council and that does work for the city that is interested in maybe doing that, but I want you guys to see what you want to do first. If nobody here wants to, then I would recommend the person that I've talked to, but I'll wait to what you guys want to do first. You guys should get first choice, I think.
And again, also, Steve, I wanted to publicly thank you for all of your hard work and dedication you've given to the city of Lebanon.
Thank you, Mayor, I appreciate it.
Is this your, this isn't your, is this your last meeting?
He's got one more, right?
Well, I'm supposed to be back the 28th, but I don't know for sure if I'm going to be in time the 28th.
Okay, so this may be your...
That's a quarter I might have to go to, I don't know for sure yet.
Okay, so this may be your last meeting, and I wanted to, again, thank you for all of your hard work, and I know you've given me a lot of advice, and I appreciate that.
I appreciate it. Still be around if you need some.
All right, we'll, with that, we'll move on to the claims.
You'd like to both prepare the claims?
We have a motion to pay the claims, we have a second. We have a motion of second, is there discussion? No discussion, okay. Motion of second to pay the claims, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Claims are approved. At this time, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Actually, hold on, I think, Steve, would you like to make a motion to adjourn?
Yes, sir, I'll make a motion to adjourn, thank you.
We have a motion to adjourn, a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? We are adjourned, thank you for watching.
Thanks.